A ton of folks in the room, but this is the best way for us to do the hybrid meeting with having part of the meeting here in person at Kaming Center and then the rest of the folks online through Zoom. So I'm Jennifer Dixon and I'm going to be helping moderate the meeting tonight and then I'm also going to be the hearing officer a little bit later. So thank you for joining us. A little bit about how things are going to work tonight, Jim's getting the stuff set up here.
Watch your legs.
Yep, okay. A little bit about how things are going to work tonight. So there's basically two sort of sections to the meeting tonight. The first part of the meeting is going to be an informational session where we're going to talk a little bit about the project, about air quality divisions work, reviewing the permit application. We're going to get a little bit more details from Andy, our permit engineer, and I'll introduce him in a second. And then we're going to go into a question and answer. So then we'll be taking questions either from the audience and online and our panelists will be able to respond to those questions. So that's kind of the first part of the night. The second part of the night, when we get into the hearing portion, we will be doing more like a formal setting where we'll be taking comments on the record, but we won't be responding. So a lot of times when people make comments, they'll ask a question in their comment or they'll stage the comment as a question. Just I always like to remind people that we won't be responding to those questions during that hearing portion. And I'll remind everybody of that later too. Something that... Am I plugged in?
You are not plugged in.
I don't think Jim plugged me in here, so I need to get plugged in a second. All right, hold on one second for folks online. We're just getting the... There we go. Is that good? All right, so the next thing that I want to go over just really quickly is our group norms for the night. So this slide was actually developed with Flink Community Group Partners. And one of the things that is really important when we have public meetings like this is making sure that we're all kind of on the same page. So we want to just make sure that we're listening actively to folks in the room with an ear to understanding that we're asking questions or requesting clarification and we have those kinds of questions. We want to make sure that if we're criticizing, we're criticizing ideas and things, not people. It's really important. We want to make sure we're communicating respectfully and we want to take space and leave space. And what I mean by that is, you know, not having just one person talking all the time or talking over each other. We want to make sure we're leaving space for everyone. That shouldn't really be too big of an issue. I have a pretty small group in here tonight, but just want to make sure we go over those before we get started. All right. Okay, so before we get started going all the way through the agenda, the first thing I want to do is introduce the air quality division staff that we have here with us tonight. Like I said, I'm Jennifer Dixon, but the first person I want to introduce, introduce is Annette Switzer. She is our air quality division director and she's also the decision maker for this project. So I know she wants to just formally welcome everybody to the meeting, so I'll give you the mic, so people can hear you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. As Jennifer said, I'm Annette Switzer, the air quality division director with Department of Environment, Greenery, and Energy. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here tonight in person or online if that's how you've joined us. And we know that everyone has a lot of important things that they're doing, so we really appreciate you taking the time to come here. We really appreciate your questions. We hope that we can answer them and also help you better understand the proposed air permit that was submitted to us for review by Karma Use and also help you provide you with other information if you have other questions. Again, I really want to thank you for being here. We know that everyone's time is very important. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jennifer so we can go ahead with the Q and A portion.
Thank you, Annette. All right, so I want to introduce my panelists before we get into everything. This person right here is Andy Drury. I'll blind myself with that. He's our permit engineer. I'll do that all the time. I might trip. I did that at the last meeting and you can laugh if that happens, so not feel offended. So Andy Drury is the permit engineer, so we're mostly going to be hearing from him during the presentation. He did the majority of the review on the application and drafting up the permit, draft permit condition. Steve Weiss is the inspector, so he's actually here in our Detroit district office, so he inspects this facility and other area facilities. So he'll be talking a little bit about his role in this company and what he does as far as making sure that they stay in compliance and reviewing all their record-keeping and monitoring reports and things like that. Susan Kilmer is one of our... She's our air monitoring supervisor. I always say that wrong. Sometimes I say manager supervisor. And what she does with her group is they are in charge of all the stationary air monitors around the state. So these are the air monitors that measure pollutants just in the outdoor air, the air that we breathe. So she'll be able to answer questions like that. Next to her is Jim Haywood. I usually don't like monitoring and modeling to sit next to each other because it's confusing, but Jim is our air modeler, so what he does in his role is he will help Andy with the permit application and looking at how potential pollution might impact areas before that pollution is there. So he uses a computer model to do that. We'll talk about that a little bit more later as well. Last but certainly not least is Mike Deppa. Mike Deppa is our toxicologist on the project. So toxicologists during permit applications will look at air toxics and their health-based screening levels and make sure that any permit that we might put out for comment would be able to meet those health-based screening levels. And then just over here in the corner, so that we're not lax in introducing people, Jim Ostrowski and Lisa Heron are here to kind of support us on the background. And then a couple other people, April Winley, sorry, is our Detroit district supervisor. So she'll be here. And the back is Jeff Cornesky. I'm going to make him help me later with the comment section if we need that and he's the assistant supervisor. So you met everybody. We haven't met all of you, but please feel free to introduce yourselves to us afterwards if you'd like. All right, so like I mentioned, first thing we're going to do is get into that information session where you're going to hear Andy talk a little bit more about the project itself. We'll have a question and answer portion. What we usually do is we'll try to get to seven o'clock or when we're done answering questions, whatever comes first. Once we get to seven o'clock or when you guys are done asking questions, folks online don't have any more questions, we'll take a little bit of a break just so we can shift over to that hearing portion of the night. So we'll get into that hearing portion. Once we're done with that, we'll go a little bit over... You don't have to make comments tonight. It's one thing I always like to remind people of. You can make comments later if you want to. There's a variety of ways to do that. And so we'll go over that a little bit. We'll talk about where you can find other information, how you can get ahold of us if you need to, and then we'll close out. So if you can't stay the whole time, this is going to be recorded. We'll share this out with everybody who gave an email address, and if you don't have an email address, you have an address, address, we can let you know about that as well. So I will stop talking. I'm going to pass it over to Andy. Whenever you're ready. There you go. Oops, that's my bad.
Oh, sorry about that. I had to practice in the morning. So one time I had, Jen, is that two large blocks are slides. We may want to do that in the future.
Yep.
This is the second one that we've done in person like this since COVID, so we're still figuring out books, so. As Jen said, my name is Andy. I am the lead permit engineer for the purpose live and still air permit application. And I worked with a group of air quality staff, including some of the ones here at the table, and were doing the air permitting application. And before I get into the details of the project, I'll talk a little bit about our air quality division, what we do and air permitting as well. So as we know, air pollution comes from many different sources. Things like power plants, fuel-driven vehicles, and various industrial sources. And our overall mission is to protect public health and the environment. And we do that through the authority we have through state and federal law by regulating industrial sources. So AQD staff do a lot of different things. Like talking about Susan, we monitor levels of pollutants in the air. We, like with Mike, examine toxic air contaminants, make sure that public health is protected. With Steve, we conduct inspections of industrial sources to make sure that they are complying with their permits. And then we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to make sure that those sources meet the air quality rules and regulations when they're there to protect public health. So our rules require that we issue permits to natural sources. But I'd like to point out a few things that our rules do not cover and that we don't have authority to address. Things like zoning or site selection, noise, and traffic on public roads. We don't have any authority to evaluate that. And so if you have questions about that or you want to talk to your local government. We also can't consider a decision whether the project is popular, whether people want it to happen or not. And we also can't decide if the project is needed or is not needed. We evaluate the project to make sure that it complies with the air quality rules and regulations. And if we determine that it meets those regulations, we are required to issue permits. So make sure companies meet the rules and regulations. They need to follow a permit to install for the equipment. I'll give you a simple overview of the permitting process. So the first step is a company decides they want to do something. They want to install something or maybe modification to it. Then they submit an air permit application to us. The application is assigned to an engineer like myself. And so my roles decide whether the project, what they want to do, meets the air quality rules and regulations. And I work with a team of other air quality staff as we do that to look at things like toxic air contaminants to see if they meet the health-based screening levels. And if the project meets these rules, then I would direct a permit. And if in a case like this, public comment is needed, we post a draft permit for public comment. And I do want to point out, public comment is an important part of our process and that's why we're here talking to you tonight. At the end of the comment period, we evaluate all the comments that we receive, and the comments we get can make changes to the decision. And finally, the decision maker, Annette, will make a decision on a permanent application. That decision could be to issue a permit as drafted, issue a permit with changes, or deny it if we determine it does not meet the rules and regulations. And that's what the decision is based on. Can the project meet the rules and regulations or not? So before we get into what Karma Use is requesting, I want to talk a little bit about what they currently do. So Karma Use makes thick line calcium oxide from limestone. And they heat limestone up into their existing kilns. They use primarily coal and natural gas to heat the limestone, but they can also use synthetic gas, used oil or glycerin as fuels. They receive limestone by truck and by barge and restore that in outdoor storage models. They receive coal by truck or by barge and they store that in outdoor storage models. And they also receive natural gas through the pipeline. Karma Use is considered a major source of some air pollutants. And when we talk about major sources, these are facilities that are allowed to emit more emissions than smaller sources do. So it's a larger amount of emissions. Major sources have more stringent record-keeping and recording requirements, and we inspect them more often. So Karma Use is also subject to a federal rule for line manufacturing in addition to our state rules. And they currently operate under a legal operating permit because they are a major source. So this image shows there are two existing kilns. You know what's there? The limestone enters the kilns at the left side and the lime product leaves the kilns at the right side. The burners are here at the right side of the kilns. And then the exhaust from burning the fuel goes out at the left here. It goes into a baghouse dust collector, which is an air pollution control device. And then it is released to the air through the stand. And the lime product is stored in silos on-site and shipped off by rail and by truck. And they are not imposing any changes to how much lime they manufacture or how they handle the lime or how they handle the coal or the limestone either. So an important part of the process I mentioned is the baghouse dust collector. And it's an air pollution control device that collects and removes fine dust from the exhaust before it's being released in the air. The dust collector uses filter bags to collect that dust of particulate matter. So this is not a picture of their dust collector. It's just kind of a generic picture. So the dirty air would enter at the bottom, go up through the filter bags, and then clear air would be released through the stand to the atmosphere. And the filtered dust sticks to the bags that are in the dust collector. And this is very important for Karma Use because most of the dust that sticks to those bags is lime. And lime reacts with sulfur dioxide. So the lime in their baghouse actually reduces the amount of sulfur dioxide that's emitted to the air. So what does Karma Use want to do? They are asking to take gas from ES Coke that is currently being flared. They want to use that as fuel in their kilns. And because burning coke oven gas generates air emissions, they have to get a permit. So we'll talk a little bit about what coke oven gas is. Shouldn't have stapled these. I didn't do that. If I have one hand, that's okay. So coke oven gas is formed when coke is produced by taking coal and heating it up to high temperature in the absence of air. And that coke is used in a steelmaking process. And coke oven gas can be used as fuel because it contains combustible gases like carbon monoxide, hydrogen, and methane. It also contains non-combustible gases like carbon dioxide and nitrogen. And as I said, when this burns, air pollutants are released, and that's why they need to get a permit. We'll talk a little bit about the permit application review process. So when we are reviewing a proposed project, the permit engineer works with the other air quality staff to review the application. The review includes looking at all the state and federal regulations they'll comply to within a while to do. Evaluating the potential of proposed emission releases for a project, including verifying their emission contamination. And their toxics review to make sure that the toxic air contaminants will comply with the health-based screening levels. And if it's warranted for the project, we also need air dispersion modeling. One of the criteria pollutants and toxic air contaminants. So at the end of the review, we need to know if Karma Use using coke oven gas in their kilns will comply with the air quality rules and regulations. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the other parts of the review there. So what pollutants can be released? All of the potential air pollutants that would be emitted by adding coke oven gas as fuel of Karma Use will review. This includes criteria pollutants, which are a small set of well-regulated and well-studied air pollutants. For this project, we look at several of the criteria air pollutants, including sulfur dioxide and fine particulate of twelve PM two point five. And EPA sets natural ambient air quality standards referred to as NAA PS or NACs or these pollutants in order to protect public health and environment. And there are also hazardous air pollutants. They're defined by EPA. EPA regulates them through federal rules, including the one for line manufacturing you mentioned earlier. And Karma Use using coke oven gas at their facility would comply with that line manufacturing standard. And we also review the toxic air contaminants. It's a much larger group of pollutants that are established by Michigan Rules. And it's almost anything that is not a criteria being. So we looked at the air toxics and our toxicologists are able to set health-based screening levels for these different air toxics. So Karma Use uses coke oven gas as fuel in their kilns, they would use less coal and natural gas as fuel. And any coke oven gas that they burn in their kilns would not be flared straight into the atmosphere of their EBS Coke. So there would be an overall reduction in emissions in the area of criteria pollutants, hazardous air pollutants, toxic air contaminants, and greenhouse gases. So I want to talk a little more about toxic air contaminants and their health-based screening levels. And the screening laws, excuse me, are designed to protect against potential health effects like breathing problems or cancer. And when we perform our review, we look at all of the toxic air contaminants that could be released and we compare them against the health-based screening levels, often using computer dispersion modeling, which we did in this case. And our review of the toxic air contaminants from the kilns shows that all of the toxic air contaminants would meet their screening levels. So I want to talk a little bit about computer dispersion modeling, why it's important. Computer modeling predicts the ambient concentrations of pollutants that the neighbors could be exposed to in the worst-case scenarios. By worst-case, we mean the maximum fuel consumption in the kilns. And the modeling essentially generates a grid of virtual air monitors all around the facility. And that allows us to look at the highest possible concentration that we alter, and that is what we evaluate. And the modeling that we did was for all the toxic air contaminants, not just the ones from coal or coke oven gas. And there could be an increase in carbon monoxide emissions if Karma Use uses coke oven gas, and so we modeled that as well. And the modeling showed that all of the toxic air contaminants meet their health-based screening levels. And the potential increase in carbon monoxide is less than what's called the significant impact level. And that's a very low threshold set by EPA. And if it's under the significant impact level, then we're certain that it will comply with the national ambient air quality standards. So a permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirements the company must comply with. The requirements in the permit ensure that the equipment operates as described in the certification and operates the same way that we evaluate it. Karma Use, the existing permit has requirements such as emission limits and a variety of things. Limits on how much fuel they can reduce and how many types of fuels they can use. It requires proper operation of the baghouse dust collector. It requires emission testing, and that lays out what pollutants have to be tested, when they have to be tested, and what test methods are used for that. It includes monitoring and record-keeping requirements. And those include records of how much limestone they use, records of how much of the various fuels they use, and things about the fuel, including the sulfur content of the fuel. There's also reporting requirements. One of the reporting requirements they have is reporting excess sulfur dioxide emissions. And their permit requirements also contain conditions about the EPA's line kiln regulations. So the proposed draft permit that we're talking about tonight, we're using coke oven gas. It includes all of the existing permit conditions that are in the ES Coke permit, ES Coke, Karma Use's permit. Has sulfur dioxide limits while using coke oven gas. It limits how much coke oven gas Karma Use can use. It includes emission testing for whether using coke oven gas. It also has record-keeping for using coke oven gas, which includes how much they use of coke oven gas, what the sulfur content is, and also the records of their sulfur dioxide emissions. So now I want to pass it over to Steve Weiss, the inspector, so we can tell you a little bit about what he does.
Thanks, Andy. Hey, everyone. My name is Steve Weiss. I work with the Detroit District Office, which has jurisdiction over the air issues in Wayne County.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I missed the slide. No problem. Thanks, Jeff. And also, they're currently the district staff person assigned to the Karma Use facility. What I'm going to talk about tonight is the role the district staff serve in terms of determining whether or not facilities are compliant with the permit to install. Now, when a permit is issued to a facility, they pretty much take ownership of it. They're responsible for demonstrating compliance with that permit and being compliant for maintaining it. And from their quality division perspective, the district staff, one of our jobs is to actually determine whether facilities are compliant or not. So one of the ways we go, I'll go through some different compliance activities. The first one is the site visit or inspection of the facility. Karma Use, as Andy mentioned, is classified as a major source of air pollution and is subject to some federal line regulations. Because of those classifications, the facilities required, that's called the full compliance evaluation periodically. And part of that full compliance evaluation is a site inspection, unannounced site inspection. I made my last such inspection back in summer of last year. The next one, I'm not giving the dates, it must be unannounced, so it will happen. CBD, they'll see me at the door. Hopefully they'll let me in. We'll all know what that, I'll know what that date is. I figure I might as well kind of summarize what happens in a typical inspection, because the one last time it was a typical inspection of the facility. I show up, let them know I'm here to check your compliance with your permit, applicable regulations. Watch a safety video, now we start the inspection. Typically, Karma Use, they'll walk around the facility, we'll take a look at the process, see if anything's changed since the last time I was there. But really, the bulk of it then, once we are done with that tour, is actually sitting down in the room and going over the permit conditions. Any permit that's still to go with the conditions, go over all the records. Now, Andy mentioned his presentation, all that goes into a permit application. All of the things we consider could be state and federal air regulations, health-based standards, air toxics. Really, the good permit facility has one. It really serves as such a great thorough, comprehensive summary presentation of the air requirements for facilities. So it's very important that they adhere to the permit and that we go through it very thoroughly. So in the case of Karma Use, we'll check facility records. It could be things like limestone production, the operation of the baghouse. We'll look at representative data. We'll actually go back to a certain period of time, not just the day I'm there, go back a few months to make sure they've been doing this all along. So we'll check that, go through that. Usually takes a couple hours to go through that. The determination's not made that day whether they're compliant or not, because I do take some of the records back with me. There is a summary report written of that site visit. So that's how that part goes. Another one of these compliance activities is the so-called stack test. Now, the draft permit, if this permit is issued, does have a requirement that within 180 days following initially use of coke oven gas as a fuel. The permit is shown verified particular matter PM, PM ten, PM two point five, NOx, NSO two emission rates via stack test. Now, one thing that AQD does, we have dedicated staff who only deal with stack testing. They basically quality assure the methods used. They check the test plans submitted by the company. They verify the results. So they would be on hand. They'd be reviewing the test report. I would actually be the facility today as test as well to actually monitor the operating conditions. We want representative operating conditions. So the company should have really good trend data to show how they've been operating for the months before, so we want a good representative test. And the results of that test, once they're certified by AQD, will actually show compliance with the emission limits in the permit. Let's see, another one of the compliance activities, it looks like the slide mentions complaints. I would kind of call that investigations. How many of you in the room, just out of curiosity, are familiar with Eagle's eight hundred member, the so-called Pollution Emergency Alert System, or PSL? How many have used it? I've got a couple down here. We also have an online complaint report tool. When AQD receives air-related complaints, one of the jobs of district staff is to investigate those complaints. So I'll give a scenario. Let's say somebody in the River Rouge area, either uses a PSL online or calls me and says, hey, there's an odor in River Rouge all over the city, or I'm seeing dust or fallout, fallout being dust that's actually settled on the surface like your car or your backyard furniture or your vegetation, and I want you to come and check this out. Well, that would actually involve an investigation, trying to go see if we can verify what the complaint had called us about. And it might lead us to a facility. You might use a wind direction. It might be a case of this particular fallout. We want to see if it is Karma Use. That would lead to another compliance activity, maybe visiting the facility. It wouldn't be as thorough as inspection as that one I mentioned first, where we'd still be checking facility operations, maybe checking the operation of the baghouse, asking them what's been going on this morning and during some of their required logs, invisible emissaries, if their staff noticed anything. So that's another way we actually would verify some of the permit conditions, do a compliance review. And then report reviews is another one. The slide mentions annual air emissions. A lot of facilities statewide, Karma Use included, submit an annual emission report every year. They actually just do their due March fifteenth. And what that report represents is activities and the associated emission estimates from those activities from the previous calendar year. And that's another job district staff has, we review those emission reports. And in case of Karma Use, we get information from them such as line production for the year, line produced for the year, the amount of fuel used. And I would go through, look at that data and I'll compare it to the permit limits to see if it's compliant. So I'm going to have throughput data presented once a year, along with some emission estimates I can actually compare to the permit as well. Then there's some other reports they submit as well. They have limestone, continuous limestone feed monitor. They send it twice a year, semi-annual report to make sure that's operating correctly. There's also semi-annual reports dealing with whether there's any deviations from the permit requirements at the facility. Now, if you do any of those compliance reviews, be it the inspection, stack test, the complaint investigation if we had one, or the report review, if you find any issues, any compliance issues, those are views. The district would issue a violation that was as a company. They would cite those issues and also the applicable permit condition and regulation might be violated by that compliance issue. And a company would have typically twenty-one days to respond to that violation, also with a compliance plan to combat the compliance. And that can lead to another compliance activity, which would be district staff going into the facility, making sure they implemented that compliance plan and that the violations been corrected. Now, some of these issues, some of these compliance activities I mentioned, you can actually find the information we put together online. I mentioned there's a report written associated with that inspection. You can find that online. You can find stack test reports on our website. You can find, what else do we have? We have the violation open to online, and then the emission reports are also online. Now, later in the presentation, also on the table, we have contact information for all of us. If any of you have any questions, it'd be me as far as these compliance activities or the status of any question about the facility or status, or how to access some of this information, let me know. I can definitely help you find that. That's all I have for now. I'll take any questions later. I'll turn it back to Jen.
Thank you, Steve. Steve talked fast. So if you had questions about some of the things he talked about, throughput, emissions, stack testing, any of that kind of stuff, definitely let us know. So I don't know if you guys can see it up here, but I just wanted to let you know that there are about ten people that are joining us online as well, so just to put that out there. So you heard about the draft permit. You heard a little bit about what Steve does for his job as far as ensuring that the company is in compliance and if they're not, what the next step is. Want to talk a little bit about public comments before we get to the question and answer. This is just something that we added kind of recently that people have a lot of questions about. So it's like, what kind of comments are, can I give? What kind of comments shouldn't I give? So one of the main things that we want to emphasize is that we'll take a comment about anything. You can comment about anything in the permit. You can comment about anything that you want. You can say whatever you want in your comment. But that being said, there are comments that are more likely to lead to changes in the permit, more likely to kind of impact what happens in that final decision. Those are going to be things that are more focused on what is in those draft additions if there. I like to use typos as just as an example. I know people are like... I like to use typos as just as an example. I know people are like typos, whatever. But just as an example, if you point out a specific typo, that's going to be a lot more likely to lead to a change than fix all of the typos. So we're kind of like things that can be sort of directed in specific. Please can I have one, hold on.
Testing, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm over seven, I think I'm good. We're just told seventeen under have to vacate. I think we're all good in this room, so we should be good there. So like Andy mentioned in the very beginning of his presentation, certain things that are not as likely to lead to changes in the final decision are going to be whether or not you support or oppose the project. Things that are sort of outside the scope of the rules and regulations that we have to examine. So just wanted to remind folks about that before we get into the question and answer. But we are going to do that now, so I'm going to just, I'm going to go to the room first. Don't feel pressured. If you don't have a question right off the bat, we'll see if we have some, any online. But does anybody in the room have any questions to start off with? All right, if you don't, you got one? Yes, all right. All right, I will point the phone for you and then we'll figure out which one of our.
I had a question as it relates to the modeling that went on. I know you did modeling currently. Is there a different modeling that you do maybe before the permit is actually decided? So I'm trying to see if there's a comparison from what was happening before to what's happening now.
Okay, so something maybe like what they're actually doing now, because they have a permit, they have an existing facility. And then I'll let Jim talk about it. It was a really nice job kind of talking about how modeling is used to look at the future, like what might be. And so that's one of the most important things about modeling itself. So Jim, go ahead, I'll be right.
This is great. I don't usually get the first question. I appreciate that, but yeah, I mean, you kind of hit on the nail on the thing. We always do the modeling before a permit is issued. Reason being is that by law, we cannot issue a permit until we are completely sure that it's not going to contribute to any violation of either the federal, the state health levels out there. So what we do is we have a computer model. Basically, what that is, is just the computer program that's a simulation of what the pollutant does once it enters the air. It takes it to affect all the weather conditions, wind speed, wind direction, temperature, precipitation, things like that. We put five years worth of that hourly wind data in there, because we want to make sure when we're looking at this, we're covering every conceivable weather phenomena out there, whether it's wind, north, south, east, or west, we want to make sure we go over it all. So what we're looking for is how bad can it get? And so within these computer models, the term we use in house is a receptor. But I came up with this term that I think is better than people clearly understand, or it's a virtual monitor. In other words, you can go out there, you're not going to see it. It's strictly in the mind of the computer, but the nice thing is is that we can put thousands out there. We can put one in your front yard, we can put one in your backyard, we can put one at your school, your church, we can put one in your front yard and your backyard. Literally, we can put tens of thousands of those virtual monitors out there all through the neighborhood. Why do we do that? Well, it doesn't do Susan any good to go out there and put a monitor out there before the project is out there, because you can't measure something that's not there yet. So we got to know what it would be, once the facility is operating, and somebody did put a monitor out there, what is it likely to read? So what we put into the monitors, because we want to be very conservative about this, we want to be, we want to err on the side of safety when we do anything. So what we put into the models is the absolute maximum that the permit would allow them to put out. Now, in reality, are they going to actually put that much out there at any one time? No, probably not. They're going to give themselves a buck. I kind of like to put it in terms of a bank account. You're going to go out, you're going to go shopping, you've got your banking account, you put some money into your checking account. You're always going to put a little bit more in your checking account than you plan to spend, because you don't want to, don't want to go over. You don't want to get that nasty little note from the bank that says that you, you went over your checking limit. It's kind of the same thing here. They're leaving themselves a little bit of a buffer in there that they go out for the date, but we're going to assume that they're doing that all the time, twenty-four, seven, three hundred seventy-five days. We put that into our computer simulation, put it out the stack. Basically, we build a nice little simulation of their facility in there. It's got the stacks, it's got the buildings around there. Three-dimensional, because the wind as it goes through there, the buildings will affect it. And so as the winds go over the building, they pick up what's coming out of the stack. And we want to see where it goes. It might get sucked down because of the wind going over the building, it might not, depending on what the wind is blowing. But what we are looking for is what is the worst case impact? Out of all those thousand, perhaps tens of thousands of virtual monitors out there, I'm only really worried about one. That's the one that gives me the highest number, what we call the worst case impact. By default, all the rest of them are going to be lower than that, so I'm not too worried about them, because in my mind, if one fails, they all fail. All have to pass. And so I put all that information into our computer simulation, I run it, and I give the results to Andy. And what he does is he will compare those against all the various health standards out there. Again, all this happens before the permit is issued. It's all done for a little narrative. We were forecasting, or Jim likes to say we're future casting now. She likes that term. But we want to know what happens before. We can tell the company, okay, you can go out, you have a permit, you can do what you. And so then Steve comes in and he makes sure that they actually do that. So the whole combination of things that we do, we run the computer models to make sure, number one, that it is predicting numbers that are not going to be above any health standard. And then Andy does what he does, is evaluation, to look at potential control measures, emissions, things like that. Steve will come in after the fact, district office will come in, and they will make their comments on. Of course, these are the guys that go in, they have to. Like you said, he'll knock on the door someday and says, hello, I'm here, and and company obviously doesn't know. Not that we don't trust them, I'd say, but we don't want them to have the advance notice of us coming in there, so they may change their operation any day. We want to catch and do what they want to do. So that's why we do that. So that is a very long one. I don't talk as fast as Steve does.
Yeah, that was good. I think you're good. Do you have follow-up though, Gina? Are you good? Okay, all right.
I just have, yeah, questions.
Probably, I don't know if this panel can address this question, but in light of the vast amount of industry that is surrounding River Rouge. And I understand that you have to look at these permit requests as an individual company. I'm thinking of the cumulative impact. And I just wanted to know, during the process of this business, what are they going to mitigate? The PM ten, will they be engaging in street sweeping? Are they putting in any type of green buffers to protect the, the community at large? I'm just wondering, do you engage in any of that prior to approving the permit? Or do you ask, what are they doing as far as the quality of life of the residents there?
Yeah, that's a really good question, specifically about particulate matter, so.
Like, I can answer part of that, and I think that maybe Andy can answer part of that, too. Particulates that are out there are part of what we call the criteria of, which are the vital products of combustion. When you burn something, we expect certain gases to come out. And those are what we call the criteria of, and those are regulated by.
A little closer to like, I was having a hard time hearing that door open. Yeah, I heard you, so I'm sorry. That's better, thank you.
You can tell if I use the carryover. But particulate being a federally enforced, we have to compare it against what they call the national ambient air quality standard. For that, we do have to look at all the other facilities in the area, and we do do a cumulative analysis on that. Now, in this case, this is probably where I need to hand it back over to Andy in terms of this project, since we are having a, basically a fuel switch. They're going to be burning coke oven gas rather than coal. And so I want to pass that off to Andy, and he can tell us the comparison between particulates that we could expect from the coke oven gas versus the particulate that we could expect from the coal burning.
So yeah, in this case, it's actually a good story, because the PM ten and PM two point five was fine particulate emissions. They're actually expected to be lower if they're burning coke oven gas than if they're burning coal. So we didn't need to do any modeling for that, because we know it's going to be lower. So if we modeled it, what we end up with is negative numbers out there, and that's kind of meaningless. So the expected PM ten and five emissions from burning the coke oven gas are lower than what they currently have with burning coal.
Yeah, well, thank you guys for answering that. And I know another part of your question was around like community projects and things like that. It's not part of the permit application. Of course, we always encourage companies to do things like that, you know. It's in their ability to do that. It's not part of the permit application process, but it's a great question.
Okay, I was just wondering, I know you're referring to a C D A.
Yeah, or it could be something like that or anything.
Right, but I was just saying, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the public at large. So I was just wondering if you engage in any type of conversations on or off record to the companies, so I didn't know.
Yeah, no, you know, it's actually, I'll just mention one thing, it's unrelated to this permit application, but one of the things that we're doing as Eagle right now with the city of Detroit and with US EPA is creating this environmentally beneficial projects list. I don't know if you guys have heard about that, but it's a way for community members to submit ideas like what you said. And they go into basically like this project bank. So let's say a company, Carneuse, or any company really in River Rouge area. If they get a violation notice, maybe they go into escalated enforcement, that's kind of like, hey, we didn't respond well to our violation, now we're kind of like in a little bit more trouble. Part of that could be either community benefits project, it could be what we call supplemental environmental project. Could be really any sort of environmental project. They can pull these projects from the bank and be able to use them. So not related to permitting, but it is something that we're doing as part of, you know, our environmental role in working with EPA and the city, trying to encourage companies to do those kinds of projects, even though, like I said, they're outside of our regulations. And so something that I think as a agents who feel really passionate about, for sure. Any other questions in the room? Otherwise, Teresa, we're going to go to see online if anybody has any questions. Yeah, sure, maybe, is there anyone here from Carneuse? I think there might be people from Carneuse, if you want to talk to them afterwards, because they, so currently, yeah. So Jim, do you have any questions online right now?
There are no questions online, but I will remind, we have a phone-in caller, so if you're on the phone, if you have a question, hit pound two.
Yep, thank you for that. Yeah, so if you're on the phone and you have a question, you can hit pound two, and that will raise your hand for us to be able to unmute you to ask your question verbally. So we'll give folks just another minute or so to see if there's any other questions that you have. Teresa, I know you came in late, but do you have any questions that you know of right away? Just want to make sure you have opportunity if you do. No pressure, no pressure.
Hey, hi, full disclosure, I work for Eagle. I'm here in the office of the Environmental Public Advocate. But I just wanted to clarify something that Jim was just talking about, that Detroit Environmental Beneficial Project List is, it is Detroit. So, and this is River Rouge, right? So there's maybe, maybe that's the next round of figuring out those kinds of initiatives.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, you're absolutely right. I think collectively, no, that's okay, no, call me out. I appreciate people calling out, definitely. Any other questions in there?
Uh, my question is, I understand with this P T I, this is just talking about the gas, coke oven gas, right? Yes. But I know by understanding, there's going to be a pipeline from E S Coke to Carneuse, correct?
Most likely, that's probably how many.
My question is, why wasn't it all together? The pipeline request and all of that, you know, because we're doing on top here, but then we know there's going to be some impacts underground. Could be something going into the water, you never know. With the land being contaminated and digging up is going to stir a lot. So I want to know, why is it being pieced like this through in one part? And why don't we get it all together? Because I mean, we're tired of coming to hearing, hearing about these bad actors. And so I want to know, why we keep getting pieced is wearing us out, worn out, tired right now.
No, thank you, Teresa, for that. Andy, you can talk a little bit about why we don't have the pipeline in this.
Yeah, air quality does not regulate pipeline installation. And I, yeah, and I don't know if anybody else does or who does. I don't know if anybody else in Eagle would, or if it's a city thing, I have no idea.
So my next question is then, if there, you talk about air quality, but this is going to the whole process of them changing their operation of the facility from coal, coke, and natural gas to coke oven, uh, coke oven gas. Then we know it's a process that's together. It seems that Eagle works in silos, because you guys are going to have to be notified about some digging and some pipeline, I'm sure, right?
I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, you know, y'all work around the land by underwater, that's a pipe, and you're building a tunnel around it. So I just want to know why it's coming in sections? When it's all going to deal with the same, a changing their process over to utilize coke oven gas from another facility?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we don't have people to answer it today, because we don't, you know. It's a great question, though, and you're right, we do a lot of times work in silos, so we can definitely find that out, or even get back to you on that one, for sure, yeah.
Ebony, I just want to piggyback off of Teresa and kind of know exactly how many more permits are coming out to this company.
I have no idea. There's just the one air permit, and from the pipeline, I don't know if it's an Eagle permit. I don't know if it's a city permit, if it's a county permit, I have no idea. I don't know if there's even a permit requirement for pipeline, I have no idea. So we can try and get that answered.
Just for the pipeline, we can look into that, but I, to Ebony's point, you know, and just to respond from an air quality perspective. In the beginning, when Andy was kind of talking about the permitting process, what happens is the company decides they want to do something, basically an application. We don't ask them to submit, you know, so it's one of these things, the emphasis is really on the company, we're getting nothing else. That was a short line, but it is, it's one of those things where, you know, most of the time, we don't know that a application is coming, and we have to address them as they come in, but it's a good question. And, you know, it might be something that we can find out and respond to, but it's not going to be something we're going to have an answer for tonight, unfortunately, yeah. Other questions?
Um, because you guys are over the air quality, and this is something that we've been going through in the past in the city of River Rouge. Is there any way that you guys are talking to our city officials about what would it look like to have a kind of policy or something for our city involving air quality for these companies such as this? So that we can kind of like filter and have some kind of prerequisites before they get to the air.
Do you mean like home, like home filters or something like that, or what?
Um, like some kind of rules and regulations, like of course they bought land in the city, but is there some way that Eagle can work with our city officials to come up with policies and protocols? So we can best be more prepared, yes, more proactive to these companies and move them accountable before they even get to this air permit.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, Ebony. And we do often work with cities, but because our rules only apply to the pollutants that are coming out of the companies. And any of those conversations are like side conversations, things that we encourage them to do. We, we do do some education on proper zoning, things like that, but it's not something we could require a municipality to do anything specifically, unfortunately.
We just a follow-up on one of the questions that responses you had. You said with the coke oven gas, it is actually going to have better readings than it had for coal? Does that mean that there's going to be less pollution in the air because they're going to use the coke oven gas versus using coal?
Yeah, Andy, you can talk about that again. I know we've talked about it a couple times, but if the permit was issued, what is that, what do those emissions or those releases of pollutants look like?
Yeah, it depends on the pollutants. So for NOx, nitrogen oxides, there would be no change. They expect kind of the same emissions from coke oven gas as they have from coal. For carbon monoxide, they expect a very small increase. I mean, that's what we modeled, the carbon monoxide. It's possible that SO two could be a little bit higher than their actual emissions have been. Yeah, sulfur dioxide. But when was that, Jim? Two years ago, three years ago? Yeah, well, twenty-three years ago, for the sulfur dioxide non-attainment area, Carneuse was modeled, their emissions were modeled, and that's why they changed from the two stacks they used to have to the one stack that they have now. And the SO, the sulfur dioxide emissions that we modeled for that, um, that was a higher rate than we expect from coke oven gas. So even though the actual sulfur dioxide may go up a little bit, it's still less than what we have modeled before. Um, it's less than the level.
It's less than that maximum.
Yeah, it's less than that maximum that we know complies with the sulfur dioxide standard. Um, uh, we expect a slight reduction in VOC, uh, particularly being the PM ten, PM two point five emissions.
So VOCs are volatile organic.
Yeah, I'm sorry, man, too many, I'm sorry.
Any other follow-ups today? Trisha, do you still have one?
Yeah. I'm trying to read and understand, clarify this. Uh, Andy, going over the permit. My question is, uh, coal has a high carbon concentration. Then coke has even higher concentration of carbon. And then I'm thinking that the gas by being gasified would have a higher concentration than coke and coal. Is that a possibility of carbon?
Um, I don't think the coke oven gas may have actually less carbon than the coal will because it's, it's made from coal.
Yeah.
So the, a lot of the carbon stays in the coal. That's what they're actively making coke. So, um, there will be some carbon in it, uh, but I don't know if you're meaning like for carbon dioxide emissions or something like that, or just.
Yeah, right, greenhouse gas. And I did hear you mentioned there's gonna be an increase of SO2.
Yeah, there, well, the SO2 may be higher than what they currently admit, but it's quite a bit less than what we modeled a couple of years ago.
Okay, and what, uh, what year, uh, what modeling, um, the parameter standards do you use for this, are they using for this permit? Is it two twelve, two thirteen, fourteen, uh, uh, national air quality standards or what, uh, for this, uh, for their, for the modeling of this project?
Yeah, we didn't model the sulfur dioxide emissions for this project because we just did that like two years ago.
Two years ago, two sixteen, two years ago, two sixteen, um, I mean, well, two twenty fifteen, women, um, no, okay. Wait, twenty six, twenty six, okay, okay. No, no.
Nine five, so.
So how often do you, you said it was only two years ago, how often do you model and using something from two twenty? How often, every three years or every four years, or that's when the permit comes up?
Maybe talk about the stat testing, because the modeling is only done on one of permit applications. But so we can talk a little bit about stat test, like the stat testing, yeah. So. No, you're fine. It's, Trisha had a day, I think.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, so the permit requires an initial test. There's a hundred eighty days, and then I'll let Steve talk about this.
Well, future tests, there's a condition right now, I believe it reads, uh, per the district supervisors, um, let's see, upon request of supervisors. So that could be a comment as well, because right now there's an initial test required within a hundred and eighty days of the company commencing use of coke oven gas. And right now the current reads as the only required test at this point.
And I, the last question is, I know that this permit was submitted like last January. And, uh, Eagle has added to review over a period of a year. Why is it so that we as residents getting all this scientific, technical data, and we only have thirty days to comment? I mean, I'm a layperson. I try to read and understand, and you see today I'm just off, off cue, uh, because reading so much information. And, uh, I don't think that's a fair, a fair way to present a lot of, I have technical, scientific, legal means to laypeople, to make, us to make ballot and comments on something like this. We need people to look at it, to read it, to break it down piece by piece for us to understand in layman's terms. Because I use a lot of acronyms. A lot of us may not know what AOG mean.
Yeah, I mean, Trisha, it's a good point for sure. This comment period, so our rules required at least thirty days. This comment period is a little longer than thirty days. It's a great comment, um, to put in if you wanted to do that. It's definitely a good comment. I think we have a question online. So Jim, um, let me come over with the mic so folks can hear really good.
Yeah, we actually have, uh, Congressman, Congressman Danadar, he's got a question, just hand raised. So Congressman.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, so, um, you know, uh, what zip code is this plan going to be?
It's in River Rouge, so I don't really know.
Four eight two one eight.
Four eight two one eight.
But it is the whole south, uh, well, it could be, uh, in Texas, the whole Wayne County community area.
Yeah, so, so, so it appears to be, uh, my district, um, I, you know, my name is Shritanadar. I'm represent the thirteenth congressional district. And I'm adding, I just wanna add a comment today to echo concerns about this permit. Which would allow, uh, coke ovens to be used in my district in southwest Detroit. Uh, you know, decades of environmental discrimination has led to the four eight two one C area being the most polluted zip code in Michigan. Uh, we must be extra vigilant to ensure all actions are safe and beneficial to the community and not just for corporate profits. I, I urge Eagle to listen and thoroughly address concerns raised by constituents during the comment period and carefully factor the history of violations by Carmuse and EES Coke as they move forward in this process, you know. I want to ensure that, um, uh, the, uh, corporations are responsible. Uh, they are monitored and, uh, there is, um, uh, sufficient oversight uh, to ensure that, um, people's health is protected and the quality of environment around them is, uh, uh, at an acceptable level.
Yeah, thank you for that. And just to make sure that we're clear, the comment period, the official comment period hasn't started yet. So if you want to lodge that comment as an official comment, you don't have to do it tonight verbally. You can submit it, um, some other ways, which we'll talk about later as well. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, uh, before we move forward. Um, Andy, it's almost seven right now, so we're gonna probably move into the hearing portion. Does anybody have one last question? Ebony, hold on one second. I'll get over to you.
So back to the permit, the question about the permit is with the permit that's, um, submitted now. The changes that you guys have modeled and discussed now, if the permit is not passed, will we still receive the same data or things that's going on now? They will not be able to, they will still be using coal?
Yes, exactly. They're, they have an existing permit, so that nothing would happen with their existing permit. If this permit doesn't go through, they would still have their existing permit. They'd still be able to do all the things they're currently able to do. Do you have a follow-up?
That's good, and I have another question.
Okay, last one.
Last one. Um, because in the past, I've been, I'm a River Rouge resident all my life. Um, where are they gonna store this stuff? Like, I know y'all, y'all showing us like the area where they're storing it now. But I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, they just sold you that space. And then three years from now, or two years from now, it's big old black hills and mountains all over our community. So what, is that in the permit about their storage and the amount of storage they can receive?
Yeah, good question. Andy, do you know if that's in maybe their current permit, would be this part of this application?
Yeah, there's no change to their limestone storage, the coal storage, there's no change to any of that that they proposed. And the coke oven gas that they would use would come through a pipe, just like the natural gas does. So they wouldn't be storing that anywhere. It would just come in the pipe and be burning like the natural gas.
So that was gonna be our last question. Thank you very much for all the questions and online as well. And we're gonna shift over to the hearing portion of the night. So give us, you know, five minutes. If anyone needs to use the restroom, it's right out there on the right-hand side. Um, five minutes, like seven oh five, we'll start the formal hearing. Um, people wanna make comments, so, all right? Jim, am I done? Okay. All right, so this is the official hearing portion of the night. And to get this started, I'm going to read an opening statement. It's kind of dry, so just a warning there to get started. And then I will start, um, calling names for folks who have indicated wanna make a comment, so. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I'm with the Michigan Department of Environmental Relations and Energy. And I will be the hearing officer tonight. And Ms. Switzer, Eric Vallee, Division Director, is the decision maker for this permit application. She'll be listening to your comments this evening. She'll be considering all comments before making a decision. This hearing is related to a request from Carmuse Limestone, which is an existing source located at twenty-five Marion Avenue of River Rouge, Michigan. The company has requested to have the ability to burn coke oven gas from EES Coke in their existing kilns. Their Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse effects on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part fifty-five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate any new equipment, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include improvements and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure those standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in the proposed permit to provide information we can use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note the proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be issued at all. The department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we can use in making a decision. So for example, local zoning, truck traffic and noise concerns are not within our authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there's widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for this permit began on February twenty first and will end at midnight on April eighth, twenty twenty-four. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing, by email or by voicemail. After the public comment period closes, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and applicable, the approved permit. So please recognize, department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. You may submit a written comment at any time during comment period via US post or by email, or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. So I will begin calling the names of the people who have indicated they would like to make a verbal comment tonight. Once we go through the cards, anyone else who would like to make a comment will be able to do so, even if you've not already indicated you would like to make a comment on your comment card. For anyone online who would like to submit a verbal comment, please raise your hand and we will unmute your line so you can speak. If you're calling in, you may press pound two to raise your hand and we'll be able to unmute you. Or you may type the word comment into your question box and submit your comment in writing tonight. We will limit your time, comment time, to about three minutes if you're speaking, and I'll let you know when you have about thirty seconds left. So thank you for your attention, and I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Um, just for the record, the congressman has submitted his comment in writing, and you do have that as part of the record already. Uh, the first person I'm going to call is Wanda Lowell Anderson. I believe Wanda left, but I wanna call her name because she did say she wanted to make a comment. All right, Ebony Elmore. Ebony, would you like to make a comment? If you could just state your name for the record and any association you have, that would be appreciated.
Ebony Elmore, um, River Rouge resident, um, just transitioning to Michigan. um just transition team Michigan president, health and environmental justice community committee chair of the Western Wayne A A C P. Um my statement um revolves around um just stating to keep in mind the quality of life for the community members in our city um and the past history that we have gone through um already with the um effects that we've had health-wise and the respiratory effects that we've had health-wise in our city of a group with these uh particular um materials and particular matters that will be admitted or will be exchanged in this air permit. And I will um wanna go on record that I will be coming back with a written statement.
That sounds good, thank you so much, Ebony, for your comment, appreciate it. Teresa Landrum, if you're next in line, if you would like to make a comment?
Okay, uh thank you so much, um you know, for this opportunity to speak. Um as you said, I am Teresa Landrum, I am a lifelong resident of this area, an area uh that has been heavily overburdened concentration of uh industry. So I'm here to comment on the uh Commuse Line in Stone, located at twenty five Marion Avenue with Michigan four eight two one eight. Um I oppose the Commuse Line permit to install, use coke oven gas, a byproduct from EES Coke Batteries operations that converts coal into coke in the operation to turn limestone into lime. Coke oven gas, in my opinion, is more harmful than coal or coke use. The gas has higher concentrations of nitric oxide and carbon dioxide. So that means more dangerous harmful emissions will be emitted into the air from Commuse Line uh by the use of this coke oven gas. The area the facility is located in is an area that has been known to be in non-containment and not meet the national air ambient uh ambient air quality standards for sulfur dioxide and for for more than a decade, and in latter years now ozone. Um these two companies, uh Commuse Line and EES Coke Batteries are bad actors and are some of the worst pollution emitters of SO two in the area. Let's look at the history of EES Coke Battery, the provider. Uh a company that has had at least eighteen air and equipment violations since two thousand and fourteen and is currently being sued uh for the violations of the Clean Air Act. EES Coke uh has failed to install needed pollution controls years ago when they were requested to, resulting in EES Coke Battery being one of the worst polluters in our state. Um now, let's look at Commuse Line. Commuse Line has also had numerous air quality violations and is currently operating under a consent agreement for not implementing continuous opacity monitoring at their facility. In addition, in two seventeen, Commuse Line was in violation of the Clean Air Act standards for particular matter emissions. In addition, Commuse Line's P T I request falls under the new source review, in my opinion, and probably uh and I can't remember from reading it for a minute. And in its P T I request, it does not show that they are going to use the best available control technology uh in their B O C pollution emissions um and control of the B O Cs. Then Commuse is in violation of statute, um the state's rule seven oh two. And if the operating, excuse me, can't actually say, can't read my writing either. Uh I have to repeat, best available control technology in their B O C pollution control. Then Commuse Line is in violation of the state rule seven oh two. And if the operation of using coke oven gas is a new source of emissions and Commuse Line does not show where they have performed a best pollution control analysis, then the state should mandate that one be submitted. In review of their P T I, Commuse Line is using, in my opinion, older data from two thirteen to two fifteen in their projected emission calculations and has now adapted to the new two sixteen baselines for SO two. Therefore, Commuse should submit new baselines and show lower emission projections to meet the new requirements. And they should follow rule eighteen oh one. The following de- the definitions applied to terms used in this part is a term defined in the part is also defined elsewhere in the rules. Then the definition containing there, you guys know, so I just can't do this, you know, it's too much to read. Uh the use of coke oven gas is totally different from using coal, coke, and natural gas to heat the ovens. And using coke oven gas, it is going to take a lot more heat to turn limestone into lime. So the estimates of how much coke oven gas is going to be needed to heat the ovens uh needs to be analyzed and put into their permit. Uh so analysis should be included in the P T I as well as the ratios that show the estimated amount of how much pollutants the company will emit in this new process. According to reports, transitioning to green steel will make coke and coke oven gas, coal and natural gas obsolete. And EES Coke Battery uh would be obsolete in itself to be able to provide a source of coke oven gas to EES Coke Battery. Uh the state should be pushed to answer, wait, the state should push to answer why they would allow this financial lifeline and new revenue stream to benefit one of the worst polluters in our state. Because we know it's gonna increase the profits they continue to operate. Uh and at the expense of pursuing uh just transition, alternative, green, and clean uh energy source. According to the uh Census Track, um it's the numbers I'll give you, you know, get to get later. Area residents, men, blacks, people of color, and low-income folk are exposed to an array of negative environmental health impacts from poor air quality that can be attributed to the concentrations of industries that surround our neighborhoods with Commuse Line and EES Coke Battery being some of the worst emitters. The environmental regulation energy should take into account the demographics and the health of the communities that live near these companies and mandate companies submit health impact assessments in their P T I along with cumulative impact studies. Also, I would like to make a suggestion. This is a lot of information, and these these permits are so technical, sometimes they're hundreds of pages. If there could be workshops and webinars to break these permits down so they can be worn in uh layman's terms, plain, simple language for us to understand better. I hope that when I was reading Commuse Line that I was able to understand and be able to contribute some value, so you can take pictures of them as my commission.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. Yeah, you can just give those to Jack, and I'll make sure that those get submitted as part of the record. Appreciate the comment. Jim, do we have anyone online that has something they'd like to make a comment?
No, nobody online yet.
So if anyone is online and would like to make a comment, again, just use that raise hand button, or if you're calling in, you can like pound two on your phone. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment tonight? Even if you didn't say yes on your comment card, we're we're happy to take your comment tonight as well. So just raise your hand and Jack will come. Ebony's trying to close the door. Jim, try to, now Andy and Ebony are doing it, so this is good. Oh, there we go, yes. We do have a hand raised, okay, thank you so much. So um Jim's gonna unmute your line, and if you could just state your name for the record. Alicia, Alicia, so if you would like to just state your name for the record and any affiliation you have, and I got it with your time, we'll be ready.
My name is Alicia Barnes. I'm a River Rouge resident, as well as the vice president of the Just Transition Team of River Rouge.
Alicia, do you, if you're making, we can't hear you, I just wanna make sure that we're getting everything that you wanna say.
Were you able to hear me now?
Say your name and that you're the vice president of the transition team. So after that, we didn't hear anything else, so if you wouldn't mind starting over, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, um I am opposed to the permit. Um I am asking the board to take accountability uh for the community that this is going to impact and the health of life that it is going to impact as well as already being a heavy impacted community on industry. I am very opposed to exposing our community to these toxins that are being released from this industry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, appreciate it. So anybody else online that has something they'd like to make a comment? Anyone else in the room? Just wanna make sure we give folks plenty of time to uh decide on that. Okay, well, with that, I think we're gonna go ahead and close the hearing. I just have a quick statement to read, and then we have a couple other things to go over before we close the meeting for the night. So uh just give me a couple minutes here. So thank you very much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on April eighth, twenty twenty four. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed, so thank you again for participating. A couple other things. Just to wrap up the night tonight. So like we mentioned earlier, this is not the only time that you have to submit a comment. So if you didn't submit a comment tonight, and you changed your mind, or you wanna submit another comment, um that's completely fine. You can submit those comments by mail. Uh you can submit those comments by email, or you can submit those comments by voicemail. And all of that information is online um for you to review if you'd like to. So it's at michigan.gov slash Eagle Air Public Notice, and Eagle is E G L E. Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. So you can also find a lot of other information on that by page. So like Teresa mentioned earlier, this is a lot of information, and we know that. So we tried to um provide various kind of levels of detailed information. Some people just want a high overview, some people like Teresa really want to dig deep into the project and look at the application and things like that. So that proposed project summary is kind of a high-level overview of what the company was asking for, with some other information about general air quality in the area and and other parts of um the work that we do around permitting. The technical fact sheet is very detailed, so that talks about the specific rules, the specific regulations. It's a lot more into the nitty-gritty review that Andy and the team did on the permit application. You'll be able to see the proposed permit terms and conditions, so that would be what we're looking at here tonight, what we're specifically going to take comments on, what might be improved, approved with changes for tonight. Uh we will post links to the meeting recording uh when it is done, which usually doesn't take too long. And we will share that information out in a follow-up email. So if you came tonight, you didn't give us your email address, or if you're online, um we will have your email address. If you want follow-up information about what's going on here tonight with Carmus, please make sure that we have your email address. Um like Steve mentioned earlier, this is our contact information. So here's your panelists here. If you are here in the room with us, you can grab one of these printed out off the table on your way out so that you have everybody's contact information. We really do encourage people to reach out to us. I know Andy's had a lot of conversations with community members on this permit, on other permits. So uh we really do wanna try to explain things that aren't coming across clearly or answer any questions that you may have. So with that, just wanna really thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is only our second hybrid in-person meeting we've done since COVID. So I'm really happy to see people actually coming and being with us here in the room. We're very happy that the online um version worked as well. It's always a little touchy, though, we've definitely had some, you know, trying times in the past. But thank you so much for everything, everybody. And if you have any questions here in the room, we'll be sticking around for a few minutes to answer those. So thanks a lot, and I hope everybody has a really good night.